But from the department, yeah, Jidat, Renalintate Masha. Datemasha?
Eh, Tawela.
Now, again, I'll start, Renalit the what councillor. Our what councillor, eh, before Kiyako mayor, Kintate Mutzamai Tawuniani. Now, also, Renalit our executive mayor. Our executive mayor of Murali City, Ntate Tyrone Gray. Eh, Kialaboga, so when you be raising your questions, then you will introduce yourself, and then we really move that way. Now, we're getting now to the main item, which is the presentation of the bill. Let's allow the department will present, then that's where we're going to give you time to engage with the presentation. Eh, Kitafah, the department, Ntatemasha, then Kina Koyarahu.
Eh, good afternoon, eh, Tawela. Eh, Yolagare, Salamarababuleji, eh, my name is Matupanimasha. I am from Gauteng Department of Economic Development.
Okay, there is a, sorry, there is a noise somewhere. Can we try to be, let's give him a hearing, so that I be audible, and then so that you are able to listen and take notes where possible. Look, when we engage immediately after that. Datemasha, put it closer to you. Oh, yeah, eh, sorry, before that, before that, eh, I agree, Babang, they will need some translations. Red rubaho, but it can't be all of us, but let's have the earphones. Those earphones, return them back, you don't go with them home. Now, when they give you those earphones, they'll come, you just raise up your hand, they'll give you the earphones, but start at the back. But now, what happens, when you get the earphone, if you want to listen to, eh, to English, you press one, but if you want to listen to Sizwana Sisutu, you press four, and then if you want to listen to Isizulu, Isikosa, you press three. If you want to listen to Shivenda, eh, Sitong, Sitonga, you press two. So I'll put very quickly, English one, Sizwana Sisutu four, Isizulu, Isikosa, it will be three, and Shivenda, Sitonga, it will be two. So, but they'll give them to you, they are busy, just you'll just raise your hand, then they'll give it to you. But now, you will be continuing, Datemasha.
Eh, thank you, Kialaboga, eh, honourable chaplain, and honourable members as well. Eh, thank you for the opportunity. And we, we will get started. So, we have tried to summarize the, the bill, as you can imagine, the actual hard copy is a bit long. So, as I present, I will also refer you to pages where you can find what I'll be talking about, so that we are always on the same page. Eh, so, I will also try to move a bit, first things, so that we can have more time discussing and receiving your inputs than me talking here. Eh, yeah, so... So, just in terms of the overview of our presentation, we will look at those, eh, few things that we have on the slides. Eh, and, and it's, it's very important, I think, eh, we, the preamble, for example, the definitions, eh, guiding principles, objects of the bill, and then we'll get into other sections of the bill. So, they are very important, eh, that we spend a bit of time there, eh, in defining, eh, some of the critical, eh, definitions in this, eh, bill. Eh, and we'll, 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 we'll guide you along the way as we continue. On page five of the hard copy, the, the copy that you have, on page five. I still see hands up, chaplain.
No, they are busy with the, is the hand for the, for the earphones, so just continue.
Okay, eh, thank you. So on page five of the, of the, the document that you have, we, just like any other piece of legislation that we develop in our country, eh, it has to be consistent, or at least aligned to the constitution and other, eh, related pieces of legislation. So in this case, eh, a few areas, three critical areas that I just need to refer to. One is that, in terms of section nine of our constitution, eh, we are guaranteed... We are guaranteed the right of everyone to equal protection and benefit of the law, but at the same time empowers the state to undertake legislative and other measures designed to promote the achievement of equality by protecting and advancing persons or categories of persons disadvantaged by unfair discrimination. So that is a section nine of our constitution, which aligns to this document that we will be talking about today. And secondly, section twenty-two of the constitution also guarantees the right of every citizen to choose his or her trade, occupation, and profession freely. So that is the, the first part of the, of the, of the, this section. So, eh, every po, every person has the right to choose his or a trade, occupation, or profession freely, but at the same time, in the same vein, it also empowers the state to regulate the practice of trade, occupation, or profession by law. Eh, that is a very important emphasis. Eh, and then the last, eh, section in terms of the preamble on, on this page five, it also says that, whereas the Gauteng Provincial Government recognizes that a significant participation and meaningful inclusion of the people of the township in the mainstream economy of the province through their own township enterprises that are supported by government and big business will transform the economy. So, there is also a, 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 an affirmation that, eh, meaningful participation and inclusion of people of the township economy to the mainstream economy in partnership with government and big business is likely, has a potential to transform the economy. So those are very important, eh, reference point in terms of, eh, the preamble to this, eh, bill that we're engaging here today. And, eh, also if you look at the... On, on, on the, on the, on the page before that, page four, it outlines the intent of the bill. So basically, it, eh... The bill seeks to provide for the promotion and the development of the township economy, and to create a conducive environment for the attainment of that purpose. Secondly, it also, eh, to provide for licensing of township-based enterprises. Thirdly, to provide for the management of the fund through Gauteng Township Economy Development Fund. Thirdly, for, the fourth point, to provide for the principles to be adopted by municipalities in drafting and adopting bylaws. So that is also a very important point of emphasis, and we'll get into those as we, as we continue. And then the second, on page, eh, from page six and seven, it's just the breakdown of the chapters, eh, of this bill. Eh, I won't spend too much time there, I think we'll get into the chapters, eh, now as well. And then on, on page eight. On page eight, we'll, we'll just look at, eh, we'll pick few, so you can see there are a lot of definitions there. So we will pick just, just few definitions for the purposes of, eh, this presentation today, eh, just to, to emphasize, eh, because, eh, yeah, in law, you know, eh, every terminology has to be clear for everybody, so that this is not subject to interpretation. So I, we have picked a few of those, eh, definitions. One is, eh, on page eight is the enterprise, if you, under, under the, what is called department, is called enterprise. This, an enterprise means an undertaking or a business concern, whether formal or informal. Oh, okay. Eh, enterprise means an undertaking or a business concern, whether formal or informal, which is engaged in the production of goods and provision of services, and also it includes an entrepreneur, and a small enterprise, a small enterprise organization, and a cooperative. So, these definitions are important, because later on, when we talk about a township, an enterprise, a small enterprise, we'll have to be able to discuss them in that context of the, the definition. Eh, secondly, an entrepreneur means a person who starts and operates a business, or both, which includes identifying opportunities in the markets, taking risks with a view of being rewarded with profits. And then, the last one, on this, eh, on page, eh, on page nine, it's a small enterprise, which means a separate or a distinct business entity, together with its branches and subsidiaries, if any, including a cooperative enterprise, managed by one owner or more, predominantly carried out in any sector or subsector of the economy. So, so there is a small enterprise as defined in terms of this, eh, piece of legislation. And also as small enterprise organization, eh, if you can, you can refer to it there on, eh, on, on page nine as well, eh, which means an entity, whether or not incorporated or registered under law, consisting mainly of persons carrying on small business, small enterprise concerns in any economic sector. Eh, so, so in any economic sector, so that is a very important, eh, point of emphasis as well. And then on page ten... We'll look at, eh, we are picking here, I think, eh, two also, we took the, the township as the definition of a township, which is very important. So it means an area contemplated in section six, so we'll come to section six later, which includes an urban or a peri-urban or a rural living area, which at any time from the late nineteenth century until April nineteen, eh, April nineteen ninety-four, was reserved for black people. So that's the first part of the definition. So a township is an area which, eh, before democracy, before nineteen ninety-four, was reserved for black people, in terms of this definition. The second part of the, of the definition, it's an area that has been developed for historically disadvantaged persons after nineteen ninety-four. Ne? So there, there are two subsections to this definition, so it's very important that, eh, we, we look at both, eh, when, when we engage in terms of, eh, because there has been a question around what is a township, and so forth, and so forth. So, it provides those two sub, sub, eh, definitions, in terms of a township, both historical, before nineteen ninety-four, but also after nineteen ninety-four, as it relates to people who are, who are disadvantaged, eh, as well. And then the last one, eh, I won't spend too much time, it's just a combination of all, so a township-based enterprise means, remember the two definitions, the three definitions, a small enterprise, based in a township, so based in this area that we just spoke about. Eh, so those are very important, eh, areas of emphasis, because we need to be able to say, if I'm a, if I'm a enterprise, I'm in a township, and there are programs that are meant to empower or benefit township-based enterprises, eh, then it includes you in the context of this definition as well. So, so that is very important. And then on the same page, we can just look at the guiding principles. So, guiding principles are quite important, what, what it means is that, eh, everything else that is in, in this, in this bill, that is proposed in this document, must be consistent with the guiding principles. So, so, so the guiding principles are quite important as well, in terms of designing program, because later on, if you design a program, but you find that this program is not consistent with the guiding principles, it may not pass, eh, eh, pass, because, eh, yeah, so, so these guiding principles are quite important, eh, area of this, eh, piece of legislation. One is that this, this piece of, this proposed, eh, piece of legislation, this bill, seeks to facilitate and promote inclusive growth and tran, and along a transformative paradigm, in order to build a cohesive and more equal society. So already, those are, those are critical few things we can underline there. One is that it has to be in, the growth must be inclusive, eh, and a growth must be transformative, eh, and, and so that is very important. Inclusive in terms of also, in, eh, making sure that what we call special groups in our, in our communities are also included in this growth of the economy. So that will mean young people, youth, women, people with disabilities, military veterans, for example. And then, and then secondly, it must be transformative, eh, as well. So, so, so that is very important. The other part, in terms of this guiding principle, is that this, this economy that is, that is growing, that is inclusive, that is transformative, must also help that diversify the ownership patterns in the economy. Eh, that is a rather important principle, but also facilitate easy access by new entrants into all sectors of the economy. Eh, so, so it means all sectors of the economy. Eh, so that is a very important point for emphasis as well. But also, eh, on the same page, on page ten, eh, if you go down there, it also looks at, there must be a focus on sectors with rapid growth potential, especially with regard to employment and exports. So these, and, and, and these interventions must also be driven by ethos, eh, by an ethos and imperatives of transformation, modernization, and reindustrialization. And these interventions in, as proposed in this bill, must also be structured in such a way that they include social protection of vulnerable groups in society through promotion of access to economic opportunities, but also include a bias towards strengthening the productive capacity of the township economy across all sectors and value chains. So, so it, it is a very important, eh, point of emphasis as well. But also, eh, make sure that they promote productive activities and value addition design to prevent and eradicate fronting practices, eh, and also they need to extract maximum economic development value from all planned levels of investment in infrastructure, and also maximum value from established and potential capacity, eh, of government departments as well. And lastly, on, on terms of the principles, is that there's a need to implement within the, eh, in this context, an effective monitoring, a solution-driven monitoring and evaluation system, to make sure that whatever it is that is being planned can be monitored, evaluated, impact tracked, and so forth. So, so that is very important. So these are the guiding principles of this, eh, draft bill that we, we're engaging on today. So the areas of emphasis will include, eh, inclusive growth, eh, transformation, diversifying ownership patterns of the economy, eh, protecting socially vulnerable groups in our society, eh, making sure that we extract maximum value in all infra, infrastructure projects, eh, and so forth, and so forth. So, so those are areas of emphasis in terms of the principles, meaning anything else that is going to be discussed later must conform to these principles, eh, eh, as well. And then the other important section that I'll spend a bit of time on is on the objects of the, of the bill, eh, of the act, once it becomes an act. Eh, so where I refer to act, I'm basically referring to the bill, so, so it's, it's one of the same thing. So, the intention or the object here is that, of this bill is to provide a regulatory framework, so we are on page eleven, eh, we are on page eleven. It's to provide a regulatory framework, which makes it possible for people living in townships to establish viable and thriving businesses, small enterprises, small inter, organizations, and cooperatives where they live. So there must, eh, so it provides a regulatory, eh, framework to establish viable businesses where people live, and then it provides those type, typologies of, of enterprises, cooperatives, small enterprise organization, and enterprise, as per the definition that we, 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 we spent a bit of time earlier on, the definitions, eh, in this area. So, so, eh, I think, eh, that is a very important point of emphasis, but also introduce an enabling framework to ensure that retail malls and supermarkets that are township-based partner with local, eh, township-based enterprises, including sourcing of products and services from township-based producers, sales providers, and manufacturers. So that is a very important, eh, very important, eh, provision in this, eh, draft bill. One is that, as we know, that, eh, we've got a lot of, eh, big retailers in our townships, almost all our townships. Eh, inasmuch as we appreciate the investment that has been made, however, eh, there are a few issues that we've obviously, eh, have picked up in terms of that. One is that, eh, there is no sense that, eh, local suppliers of some of those goods or commodities that have been sold are supplying those big retailers. Eh, so, so this, this draft bill therefore makes a provision that, eh, that, that, eh, these big retailers should be able to provide, eh, eh, other shelf space and so forth to, 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 eh, enterprises in our townships. So that is a very important point, I think, eh, it's, it's very important. So, so, we, we should be able to, 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 eh, see a bit of movement there. But the second, thirdly, to establish specific procurement rules and programmatic support that allows government and its main contractors to buy from large groups, large group or groups of township-based enterprises with systems linking them, so that there's like, they can supply as if, eh, they are one larger group. So this is a very important point, eh, and I think the example that we've been giving is that, if you go to the big retailers now and say, eh, Kinalispinach, Kinalispinach, Kumrao Kamola, they go for the supply. But the Rano is fine, eh, bring your spinach, Mara, we need so many tons of this spinach every day. So you may find that as a, as a one business, you may not have the capacity to supply the volumes that they need, but as a group, you can actually, eh, eh, do that. So it requires a bit of organization, eh, bit of organization, eh, from the ground up. Eh, so this is just an example, I mean, there are a lot of examples we can give, whether it be bread, eh, and here we're talking about even public, public procurement, where government may say, eh, we need bread, eh, eh, three million loaves of bread, whatever. As an individual entity, it may not always be easy to do, to supply and meet their, their demand for those volumes, but if you, eh, club together as a group and you are able to, you can be able to do so, as an example. So it's just an example, there are many areas we can, we can look into, including bricks, eh, eh, food items, and so forth, and so forth. Eh, so, so, so basically, eh, there is that provision, that actually government, so in terms of procurement rules, it means that once this act is, is approved, eh, government can then be able in there, even in terms of the tenders, and say, eh, for this tender, we're looking for even a cluster of, so that they can actually meet the, the, the requirements in terms of volumes, as an example. So, so, eh, that is a, a, a very important point, but also, as the second part around this clustering approach, or this clustering model, is that government must also compel enterprises that get contracts from government to also procure from township-based enterprises as well, or groups of township-based enterprises. Eh, so, eh, it, it, it's a very important point, eh, because one of, two of the biggest problems that we face as, as small business is, eh, access to markets, and, eh, and secondly, eh, access to funding. Access to funding is not that important if you have markets, everybody will want to give you money, but you need really a market to establish a market, and money becomes easy, because, eh, it, it's, 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 eh, it's something that is, becomes viable. But it's still important in other aspects, eh, supply, I mean, eh, availability of money. So what we are saying is that, we, the, the, there is that great emphasis on markets being made available for, for township-based enterprises and goods that are produced there as well. Eh, I hope we are on the same page. And then, eh, as we continue, on, on the same page, I think, on, eh, on, eh, yeah, number D, eh, also, the object is that it seeks to provide an enabling environment for municipalities to develop taxi ranks into micro central business districts, and to support taxi economy, and use its scale to grow, eh, supporting value chains and industries. And we know that, eh, taxi, a taxi economy is, is one of the mainstays of the township economy, eh, an activity there, but if you look at the, at the value chain, most of, eh, guys in the township only participate at the end of the value chain, or the taxi owners, operators, basically ferrying commuters from point A to point B, but if you look at the value chain in terms of production of, eh, components, and so forth, and so forth, even the funding element of the taxi industry, taxi economy, it's a, it's a, it's a pro, it's an area that is still a bit of a problem. So, so this bill therefore makes a provision that, eh, while there, there has to be development of taxi nodes and taxi ranks into micro business districts, but we must also look at the taxi value chain, the taxi economy value chain, and be able to enable participation there, eh, eh, in that, in that space. Eh, and also, the second one, to support the development and promotion of township-based real estate development model, which converts what you call the high, the high-stud commercial densities into township high streets. So that is also a very important point, as you know, that historically, eh, most of us, especially as boys, as you grow up, eh, eh, go back room for it, to say, oh, look at Nyan. So, the, the backyard market in our province, it's estimated that more than four million people in our province live in the backyard rooms. But it's a market that the, then, the mainstream economy has not supported, because it's categorized as informal, and, and all of those things. So, so, so I think it's, it's one area that, eh, working with municipalities, eh, there is a great potential in terms of creating, eh, value in the township. Eh, so for example, if you have, eh, if, if, if we sort out the issues around rezoning and converting of rice to build proper backyard rooms, you can imagine the impact on, on, on income in townships. Eh, so if you've got three rooms now, and you are allowed to build up, as an example, if the municipality allows you to build up, you build additional four. Imagine the impact on, on, on the income of that household. So, so, so it's a very important project, eh, that, that government is already undertaking, eh, already, eh, and I think, eh, it's one area that working with municipalities will need to stimulate and unlock, eh, this area, as an opportunity area. Eh, but also, on average, from, from the work that we've done in other areas, I think Temvisa Ivory, where the, the backyard rooms are, the program has taken off, on average, the, 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 the income impact on households becomes like fifty grans a month, eh, depending on the number of rooms that you build, and you, you are able to refurbish and build. So, so the impact is quite huge really, eh, if you look at jobs, but also, eh, eh, what, eh, families are able to do using the money they generate from that income, eh, to invest in other things and so forth. But also in other areas, you can then include commercial units in those as you do that, eh, in form of proper, where there is a proper, eh, permission. Of course, in, eh, this, you also need to consider bal, eh, the, bal, bal, balk infrastructure in those areas as well, the, the state of that as well, as a, as a, as a, as an opportunity as well. So it's a very important, eh, area that, eh, eh, government is focusing on a lot, and, eh, yeah, working with municipalities, eh, there's, there's hope that we can actually unleash and stimulate this area of work. The last point is around promotion and support of development, I, I mean, supporting the development of representative associations of township-based enterprises. Eh, you will recall that, eh, eh, the, 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 the business forums in our township, business chambers, and so forth, eh, play a very important role, eh, in terms of mobilizing business and so forth. However, that role has not necessarily, that potential has not been realized across the board. So, so one is that there has to be a recognition of the, of these organizations, this, eh, So one is that there has to be a recognition of these organizations, these chambers and forums and so forth, so that they can be partners to development, not the other way around. In twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen somewhere, when I think the president gave an update, the value of projects that were delayed, for example, because of disagreements with business forums, I think it was about nineteen billion, if I'm not mistaken. So you have to imagine, if a project is stalled, okay, the investor will fill the pinch, but also as the community in terms of other opportunities, we also fill the pinch. So what we are saying is that the relationship must be re-looked at. So that is a positive relationship, is a developmental relationship between private sector, business forums, chambers and government as well. So I think it's one area that is very important, that we think can actually help a lot. For example, government in the main relies on business forums for intelligence in terms of, you know, townships and areas in the townships around opportunities, databases of SMMEs in the townships, relies a lot on business forums. But that relationship must be normalized, it must be properly looked at as well. So there is that proposal in this draft bill, that that be a critical area of focus. And then on page twelve, it looks at the application of the act. So basically, the act will apply to every organ of state in the province, including municipalities. So everybody will have a responsibility to implement this and adhere, at least to this proposed legislation. And the second part of this slide says that in any event that there's a conflict between this act or any other act which regulates township economy, this act will prevail. So it is provided with a triumphant clause to make sure that there can be enforcement of some of the things that needs to be done. And then the part on the designation of township just mainly refers to the fact that a member of the executive or MEC in this regard may declare an area township as per the definition and so forth. So that is quite straightforward, I won't spend too much time on it. And then chapter three, on page thirteen, makes reference to the licensing of township-based enterprises. So I think the area of emphasis here, if you look at number three, where it says that in addition to the section eight, a license will include a written or a digital license, registration, approval, recognition, permission, consent, certificate, exemption or any other authorization granted or issued in accordance with any law enforced for the purposes of establishing and operating a business enterprise. So that is a very important point. And I think in the actual document, later on, it talks about the display of licensing on premises, which is a normal standard practice, obviously, especially if you look at the restaurants. Every restaurant you go to, there is a display of a license somewhere next to the tea or something, usually. So it's an important area, but just area affirmation as well. And then on page fourteen, this section of chapter four focuses on the promotion and development of township-based enterprises. So a lot of what is included here is basically reaffirmation of the role of government in terms of supporting township or enterprises generally, but in this case, township businesses because the general laws in our country around small businesses will apply everywhere. But in this case, it's specific to townships as defined earlier. But basically, in the way is that a department, MEC responsible must formulate policies, programs and, you know, that for the promotion of township-based enterprises. Make sure that the multi-efficiency of performance of those enterprises, establish databases and sources of finance, provide marketing support for township-based enterprises and so forth. So you will realize that in the document is a bit longer, but I will not go through everything in the interest of time, just to focus on a few areas on this section. But basically, it's a reaffirmation in terms of what the government responsibility in supporting SMMEs, small enterprises from townships in this case. So remember earlier on, we also spoke that this is a, the application is that it will apply to every organ of state in the province, meaning that every department and municipality will have a responsibility, once this thing is passed into legislation, to design policies, to implement policies that are meant, aimed at promoting the development of township enterprises. So it is not a legislation that falls only under economic development, it applies across the board. You will recall that in terms of the design of our government, or at least our departments, market access, a lot of market opportunities do not necessarily lie within economic development. They are within human settlements, housing, infrastructure department and so forth. So those departments also are now, in terms of this proposed draft bill, must also have programs that will support township-based enterprises, including markets, including provision of finances, including training programs and so forth and so forth. So that point is quite important because people usually are looking to think, actually, this is a legislation for department, no, it's not for the department, it's for the province and all organs of state in the province. So I think I thought that is an area of emphasis that we needed to make. And then the second part on page fifteen is around the plans and strategies by provincial organs of state. I think I've already made the point that all organs of state will have to do that, formulate plans and to support township-based enterprises. So let me not go through all the sections in the interest of time. On the benefits and incentives for township-based enterprises, for example, if you look at financial assistance, same principle, logic will apply, that an organ of state responsible will make sure that in terms of budgeting and many other things, that there is a specific focus on township-based enterprises as well. And yeah, so that is a very important point. But also, where possible, need to design and establish standards for later administration and monitor effective use of such, so that there is sustainability in terms of funding our SMMEs in the township. And then the second section on page seventeen, other section, on the development of infrastructure. So it also continues to say the same principle, the provincial organ of state must make reasonable measures to provide websites, social amenities, business information centers and so forth and so forth, for the development of township-based enterprises. So meaning that if you go to Department of Social Development one day, they can't say, ah, no, no, we are not economic development, go that side, no. They will have to say, okay, this is what we are doing as a department to basically support this initiative from the mandate that we have, this is what we can do, basically. And then the second point is about industrial and commercial estates. It's the same principle, a provincial organ of state must, on conditions and terms agreed, assist a sector, a sector township-based enterprises with provision of buildings and premises on which enterprises may undertake designated business activities. So the same principle as well, so very important point. But on the letting of buildings and premises, it's quite specific on this one. So because, and there is a particular reason, all government buildings, provincial-owned buildings, schools, pieces of land and so forth. If as a user, for example, you no longer need that property or piece of land, you send it back to DID. So DID is our custodian, is our custodian of all, you know, they've got the asset register of all our pieces of land, properties and so forth. So for example, if Department of Education, you know, we're no longer using this school because there are not enough keys, whatever, you know, most of the schools in our townships that are not, no longer used, that school is given back to DID or Department of Infrastructure. So but what this bill is saying is that those things must be made available in a proper way to township-based enterprises. And I think we've started on a positive note with the department, I must say, and we should be able to continue to the new financially on other things as well. So in this case, for example, it's not only that, not only just saying this school or this laboratory, because it's no longer working, you can take it and convert it into whatever you want to use it for, to generate money and so forth. The conditions must also be favorable for the type or the level of enterprise that you are. For example, the proposals, or at least proposals in this bill says that some of the conditions or proposed conditions in terms of the letting, that for example, you may not, you may not agree with the owner of the facility, that the first three years of operations as an enterprise, you may not be able to pay certain things until you, so it's basically meant to enable then, you know, as they say, enable people to actually get into this area. So even in terms of a timeline, so they should be able to say, within the first three years or five years, these are the conditions that we are providing to you, to enable you to actually establish and get to start running as well. As you know, in our country, we are told that small businesses, and this timeline is very important, small businesses in our country mostly don't survive beyond three years. So meaning that even that three years, part of the problem is that you've got a property you are leasing, you are paying exorbitant rents and so forth, this can come very handy in assisting and lessening the burden of paying rent on a month-to-month basis. So those are very important provisions. And then on page eighteen, on capacity building programs. So the emphasis also here is that the capacity building programs must be demand-driven so that we build the capacity of the township economy. We know that historically, we've had a lot of programs, training programs that upon completion may not link you to every, any obvious opportunity. So what we're saying is that if we're going to increase the capacity of the economy, the training programs must be demand-driven and be able to help us increase the capacity in the township as well. What is the other point? Yeah, so also develop and administer certified, demand-driven capacity building and entrepreneurship programs as per sectors in the township. And on the same page, the focus on development of markets and provision of marketing services is also very important that a provincial organ of state must facilitate establishment of markets for products generated in that sector. Agriculture is a sector, as an example. Transport is a sector, that example. So but also provide linkages between the sector-based enterprises and markets as well. So you can see the emphasis on markets in this document. Yeah, and then obviously, one, as I mentioned earlier, the biggest problem in our township as entrepreneurs, money yes, but mostly markets. So that is an emphasis in terms of this bill, that there has to be markets for our products in the township and associations support, run research and development and so forth. On page nineteen, as you know, that we live in a fourth industrial revolution, as they call it, we also need to make sure that we use, we take advantage of the technology to leverage and actually grow our business. And one of the examples is that now, if you are in Kariso, in a corner in Kariso, you're producing some product that is very good, very good quality. Your market is no longer Kariso, you can sell it to someone sitting in a village in Nimboba called Zingi Zingi because you can connect via technology, applications, digital marketing and so forth and so forth. So I mean, even now, if you are like myself, you are from Nimboba and you want to send a product to your parents, you can go to Pepp, Pepp will deliver it there, as an example. Following day, it's not going to take a week in fact, following day, the old lady will call and say, hey, I'm happy, I have this parcel. So what I'm saying is that even if it applies to us as business people as well, where we for products that are very good quality and so forth, the market is no longer our township. The market is the whole continent everywhere else, where we can be able to use our skills, digital skills to reach new lines and new frontiers in terms of our business. So we need to be able to also think about it that way, the use of technology. But to do that, we also need to be connected via proper broadband infrastructure, and we'll come to it later as well. But one of the examples is that, and that we need to be able to encourage innovation and transfer of technology, but also help support the registration and protection of intellectual property, especially in the tech space as well. So just to zoom into two examples in terms of this section of the bill. And then on page twenty, chapter five, which mainly focuses on funding or the establishment of the fund. I'm not going to go through all of it because most of it is mainly governance-related issues. But what is important is that there's an acknowledgement that as you streamline and you improve regulation, you also need to enable financially as well. So part of the bill introduces a fund or a funding mechanism targeting only township enterprises. So meaning that if you go to where the bill is managed, I mean, the fund, somebody from elsewhere cannot be on your queue, if they are not from the township and they are not categorized as such in terms of the definition. So it will be targeting for the first time ever only township-based enterprises. So the purpose of this fund obviously is that it has to provide affordable and accessible credit or loans to township-based enterprises or products suitable for such. And this point is very important because as you know, that money being available doesn't mean is affordable and doesn't automatically mean is accessible. You can have money, you can have water next door, but you may not be able to use it. So it means that this money must be affordable for township-based enterprises. It must also be accessible and meaning that the systems in terms of applications must support such. So this is a joint fund between Houghton Province and IDC. The plan is that at some stage, it has to be, is a joint fund, it has to be a one billion fund to support exclusively township-based enterprises. So and I think soon, I suppose, when everything else is sorted, the fund will be announced in terms of how you can apply, where you can apply and so forth and so forth. So it's a very important provision as part of this, because you can't just regulate and you then leave SMMEs, you need to enable, as you enable regulation, must also enable access to affordable and funding as well. But also the second part is that there has to be guarantee of repayment and provide loans. So part of the products must also ensure that there can be guarantee of repayment, at least the money must be, meaning that there has to be insurance products that are also included in this solution as well. But as we know, in our province, in our country, the delinquency rate in terms of repayments is higher, sixty plus, sixty percent plus, which means that, yeah, for every ten people that are given money loans, only six or less will pay or so. So that means we can't really fund additional SMMEs. And so it's a very important, but a insurance solution is very important as part of this financing mechanism as well. But this funds must also, it must finance capacity building activities, it must finance research and development as well. So I think from, just from page twenty, you, I, I think you can see that most of the stuff are mainly governance issues. Where for example, talks about the establishment of a board, annual reports that must be submitted to ensure that there's transparency, who is disqualified from being on this board, if you've got fraud issues and theft, you may not be allowed to be on, on, on the board. Terms of office, committees of the board, how do you fill vacancies in the board, meetings of the boards, transparency and confidentiality, minutes of the meetings, remuneration allowances, dissolution of the board, and so forth, access, accessing the fund. If you look at page thirty-one on accessing the fund, there's a specific emphasis there that any township-based enterprise may, on application, access funds by way of credit, loan, factoring, guarantee, micro-insurance from the fund. And then it explains that by factoring means buying off invoices at discount and taking the responsibility for collecting the payment due on those invoices. So, so that, that talks about accessibility. Because as I was saying earlier, money being available doesn't mean is affordable, but secondly, doesn't mean can be accessible. So it's important that this is accessible in design, the instruments of this fund. And then I will sort of move to chapter six on page thirty-three. So as mentioned earlier, this thing, this, this draft, once approved, it will apply to all organs of state, including municipalities. And, and, yeah, and I think that, 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 that section is quite clear. But what it introduces is, is what you call principles for the development of bylaws. So, so, so which is very important because as you know that across our province, municipalities, municipalities are very highly regulated space. And, and, and for, there's a reason for that, as per the constitution and everything else. So, but what this bill introduces is principles that municipalities can adapt or adopt to make sure that their bylaws can help us to achieve the objectives of the bill, as per the principles. I think I probably spent a bit of time on the, on the objectives earlier. So meaning that our bylaws must enable than what we've, we've seen in some areas. They must enable, enable access, for example, access to facilities and so forth and so forth. Otherwise, then we may have a problem because a lot of the interventions will happen in local government in terms of space. So, so the role of municipalities is very critical, very important. But what this act does is to say municipalities, in terms of a township economy, these are the principles that you can adopt in designing your bylaws, revising and so forth, so that we all, as a province, all organs of state, we achieve the same goals in terms of developing township enterprises. So that is a very important distinction in terms of this process. One is that six months after the, the adoption of this act, municipalities will, so the, 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 the expectation is that at least bylaws will then be consistent with the principles after six months. That is the first option. But also a municipality may ask for extension in terms of the period for, for another extra three months so that they can make sure that, that some of the bylaws are, are consistent with the principles. But there are a lot of municipalities that already have bylaws that are consistent, by the way. The issue could also be in some areas, just to capacity municipalities to enforce bylaws or to enable, enforce in a manner that is enabling than what we've seen. So it, it doesn't necessarily mean wholesale, complete, no, complete change in some areas. There might be areas that are problematic where we can sort of be able to, to solve them. For example, if you look at procurement and payment of, payment of invoices on time, it, it has been a problem. In the province, there was a decision taken that entities must pay all invoices within fifteen, thirty days at least. But departments went an extra mile and say, no, instead of paying within thirty days, we'll pay in fourteen, fifteen days. Some are not, but most are. So, so that's where, for example, a, a, an introduction of a, a piece of legislation like this can have a positive effect. Because what we are now focusing on is that, yes, okay, we see, but let's actually be, look at instances where we enable than, than punish like what we've seen a lot in our, in our, in our country. And, and so, so this section on, on the, on the, so this is the, the section on the township economic development bylaws. But also, just to say before I get into it, is that there's also been an acknowledgement that for a while we have been using bylaws that are much more suitable for suburbs in the township. And as a result, automatically you display township enterprises. In the case of Alex, I mean, the case studies have been done in Alex and Santin, where you are using the same bylaw for managing space without taking into consideration the material conditions on the ground. And what it does is that it's, it becomes a problem. On, on the other side of the road, the impact is a reversal, but on the other side of the road, the impact is positive. So hence the emphasis on township economy development bylaws. So, so, so in this case, municipalities must ensure that their bylaws introduce building standards that are applicable in areas in the township. Applicable becomes important. So the bylaws must be, the, the building standard must be applicable in areas in the townships. Consider alternative building technology to renovate, expand existing properties on your buildings, very important. Because bricks and mortar is no longer the only option available in terms of building. There are other alternative building technologies available in the market. So that is very important. But also on the, on the, on approval of developments in the townships, there must also be impact assessment of displacements of local firms or companies. But also look at how, as you develop, this, this new development, local companies can be included in the, in the value chain of whoever is developing that area as well. And then introduce tax ranks, including zoning overlays where, for example, within, conferring commercial rights up to five stories within one kilometer radius. But also introducing fines and penalties for land that remains vacant and unused. And, and I think this is the most frustrating part of our, of, of the work because in our townships, we know pieces of land that has been there for a long time. Nobody's using them and the owner is, you know, but somehow it just remains there. So, so what it's saying is that it is promoting the situation where every available property that can be used and be used positively will be used. And if it's not, then obviously the owner may end up in carrying fines. Including government, by the way, it's specific. It also includes government because government is still the biggest owner of pieces of land and properties in our province as well. And then as I wrap up, they say, also the, on page, you got page eight, sorry. I lost a bit of ink. But so, so on the, on, on, as you continue on the development of this bylaws is that municipalities also must, must also provide an enabling environment for private sector investment into last-mile broadband internet infrastructure in our townships. Now, this is very extremely important because if we want to provide, you know, broadband connectivity in our townships, it means we must enable those who can invest in infrastructure to do it. Infrastructure like the guys who are trenching our streets, putting cables and stuff, be able to connect our schools, they can be able to connect our, our, our homes as well. So as a business in Kariso, if previously, for example, you had to go to some place called town to access internet and do research, you don't need to be there physically, you can do research at home, but because of access to connectivity, you can't, you have to go somewhere. So, but municipalities must enable that through the two, 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 two examples. One, on reducing the cost of way leaves or at least standardizing those. Sometimes it's not the cost, sometimes it's standardizing across the province, not only one municipality. Because you realize that in, in other areas, it may take you one month to get the application approval. In others, it may take twelve months. So if you are an investor and you want to move, you have money, you want to invest, where will you go? As an example. But the residents in the other area where it takes twelve months to approve may suffer as a result. So, so that is that there must be a way of reducing the cost of, a cost of way leaves in designated township areas for companies willing to install and manage broadband services. But also we must allow for bidding service, bidding system for use of street finisher in these areas as well. Street finisher, if you go to other areas, you may find that instead of trenching outside our yard and so forth, these service providers can, can do what they call mounting, mounting receivers on street finisher, on, on lies and poles and so forth and so forth. So it's a different technology, it's cheaper to mount, but it creates lesser jobs. Because you just need two people, they can mount the whole of Kariso as an example. But when you trench, you can create more jobs. However, it provides an alternative in terms of where you want to deploy connectivity quicker and so forth. So, so that is very important, but we, we definitely need municipalities to enable us in this, in this, in these areas so that we can connect our, our, our townships properly. And then the, the last one is that this provision of way le, way leaves permits or permits must be conditional upon the inclusion of local S M M Es in the installation and maintenance of the value chain of the broadband infrastructure. That is very important. And, and we know, we know in other areas in our province where investors will come into a township, they will start digging and the community will stop the project. We know, I mean, but there are about seventeen areas where such projects have stalled completely to stop because there was no, there was no proper consultation. But also, it is not clear how that project is going to benefit and, and benefit the local communities where it's been rolled out. So it is very important therefore, as we approve the way leaves, we also, there are those conditions that local S M M Es must be, must be participate, but also they must be given preference in terms of maintenance and installation of this. And I think I will pause here, Chairperson. The last slide is just to say that just like any other piece of legislation, there's also provision that a member of executive can also develop regulations in addition to address certain aspects of this. So if after two years we are implementing and the M E C feels that there is a gap somewhere in terms of the, the, the bill, you can then introduce regulations. Just like National Treasury will always do, K P F M A, Regulation Nine, Regulation Thirteen and so forth. So in this case, there is that provision as well that a, a, a a regulation can then be developed to address some of the gap shortcomings so that we increase wireless efficiency in terms of implementation as well. So thank you for your time and thanks over to you, Chairperson.
Ria Lebura and Demasha. Now, we're going to listen to you. And like I indicated already, our role is to listen. This is why it's a bill. A bill is just a draft, nothing has been concluded. We are listening to you to make inputs to this bill. Now, because of Renali problem here now, five o'clock, they might cut the electricity. So Ria Lebula tried to speak just two minutes. Be sure, just two minutes, and then we give somebody else. And if you lose somebody, you are covered. Be honest, I'm covered. So that we move that way and we're going to talk to the bill. It's not a general. What La Bula la kadi ncho, kame itse, kawatava, it's not this bill. We'll call it order. So now the focus is what has been presented. So that's how we're going to do it. I'm going to hand over to Menyubi. She's the one now you'll be in her hands to take you through in terms of who should speak and all that. I don't know whether there is a roving mic because, and even the one for the, there should be the one for, for the, our facilitator here because he had to stand and talk to the people here. Can we get a roving mic here? Let's come here and then I'm sure there'll be another one that will be for the people. So that we give Menyubi a roving mic and to facilitate this process. Thank you, Menyubi will be with you now. Let's get our staff, make sure that somebody is here to assist.
Gisotela uguni komba, uguni gaza, ama numbers. Maniti one, uzobau, kambala kuhu number one for the purposes of speaking. Zokalala. One, two, three. Three. Here. Konofunukulum. By begile, ugu ti ifandi ni zotola ma loans. Definition ni et township, we no shala gu sapab. Before wa kshala belu, seklaba niama, we no zaytola ini, according to its definition, yesa, ye, ye, ye township. In tetri ni, four, four. Four. Number one. I'll deal with this one first, number one. I'm starting with this first, there are four.
Eh, agitomeka olle rumeliisha. Greetings for all the leadership. Genale, lipuji shuje, genale lipuji shuje pe, lipela, je longor, moshomuwa di ka, ngahwazofala, ngaharabiwa mojona. Moshomuwa, Mr. Masha, oka, oka ntu, xake koli, ye bolela koi, ne bolelu. Motavengi, small businesses, more location eh. Probleme, Renali ideas, jau develop a business. Mara, Renali probleme. Our problem is when we come inside the departments of our municipalities. The people whom supposed to help us in the departments of the municipalities, like when we start to need the resources, such as spaces, lands, where maybe we can start utilize to grow whatever our vegetables. That is where we start to pick up the problems. Ife, kubela ware, rela kan piti shamo yo na ware. Maybe le na, lekaba, lebele, anata weyra pe yahu, try yahu. Bargain, eh, ofa, ba tobari, na bakamaspa le, muri department eh, a training. Yahu ware, when a person comes inside your office and asking you such as an important thing like he want to create a business to empower other people in the location, please, even if you don't have that idea, consult and then help that person by consulting. I am a victim of such. Because I've been in the business of trying to have a land in Kariso around Chief Morale. I contacted the council, after area, the councilor helped me to write the letters to the department in the environment, land in Mas, Masparu of Maral City. From twenty twenty till today, no one is helping me. Eh, that is what I said, this is the question and also the plea to you to help me as a government. Because maybe you will talk to us now as a government, you'll tell us, ware, we can go to the municipality, we can show them our, we can, our initiatives. But they cannot help us, I don't know, it's because of lack of I don't know if it's because of lack of training or it's because of maybe what you're telling us now, they don't know. Maybe you have to pass that induction to them. Then when you come to us, then they know. When we go to them, they know exactly what we are here for. That is what I'm asking you, the leadership. I'm happy you are here today, but I'm a victim of a piece of land. Where I just want to do my agriculture there. When I visit the department of the agriculture, they asked me, go to the municipality, then we can come to you to install water, to try to give you whatever, the tanks, whatever, what you need in your space. But those people, I don't know, maybe they don't have, what are you telling us now? If you can maybe divert that induction of today, at least you drop into their doors or in their windows of their offices. Maybe we can be helped, thank you.
Yeah, let's be mindful of the two minutes.
Number two.
Eh, bakholo Dumeela. Galibijoki Christina, kijawamomotlaki, kimo construction eh. Bakholo genale problem, kibonako page 12. Khubiwaka taba yadi fora. Genale butata bosiras. We are surrounded by mafias, muri fora mo. The mafia so, they are tasking their own pocket. So how are you guys going to monitor them? Because, rasa safari konzakwal, especially Aholi Mosadi, it's a problem. Yegopa, please guys, batangmoto otlo monitaran, di fora mota Renali, di problema, muri fora munt.
Thank you very much, number three.
It's me, Dumeela. Okay, genas nega konya nega zokowat, nine. The richest ward in Mokali City. By the way, because there's a lot of fames in that space. I would wanna maybe address few things relating to a lot of stuff here, but maybe if there's a time for us to even submit what we want to do, because giving this thing here and say we must at the same time tell you what we thinking. It is not proper. Ngarege tenda fela hori viti seleba, kawana. So maybe give us time again to deal with this. But let me make an example of what is entailed here. It will come as a joke. Feb. March last year, we saw a board of picking pay come into a township. And then I went to my ward councilor in our group. I said, rebona picking pay board, what's going to happen? Who has spoken to us about this board of picking pay? Who's going to put a picking pay there? Our role as the buying power, Lebatwalo, we can provide staff in that picking pay, yegoka. Surprisingly, my ward councilor said to me, kogat, nine, you must note it. He said, no, it's a private establishment. Loena hawa, na wata something, you can go and do it. I didn't really go further because I said, how is a business? You have to make people to participate. Even when you build your own house, you have to tell your ma kelo, anakorikwa, the hard double story. Can you sign? Because, kitho honge, alisats. Mara, there's a disconnect. We can come up with a bill. But as long as, Tyrone, is Tyrone still here? The mayor is still here, right? As long as the executive mayor and his councilors are not connected to this thing, it's going to be useless, it's just going to be a tender. And then the next five years, we will come here again. I want to make an example again. Five, six years ago, La Wohambaile was the MEC for Economic Development. We ran after him because they were talking about township revitalization. As we speak today, we go then say, guys, we have supported township revitalization, we have advocated for it. Up to today, there's nothing, we put proposals to say, this is what can be done. Now, six years again, we've got this thing. What's going to happen? Do we just have to? And I'm going to say this again. Guys, regarding this bill, Rona Batoban, Renali only one thing that can make things happen, Renali buying power. If it's not protected, road lagadi bili, ribu, where's already meeting. And like I'm saying to you, picking pay is there, Honani, unless you speak. We've had a meeting a week ago. I said to them, within the township, Yakariso, who's providing you with the services? Procurement, can it not happen from Mokaris? And I think this bill is late now because picking pay is already there. Shop ride is already there. For us, huraba punyelis, it's gonna take really a lot of work. So my question is, with establishments that are there already, your picking pay, your shop ride, which is very difficult because government, the pala gishay hold a shop ride, I get a light, it's a CIPC. It's going to be very difficult for us, huraba shop ride. We would want to have local people bar, balefa, whatever that you are selling. It's going to be difficult. Picking pay is willing because they can also give you a franchise, right? So my question is, with establishments that are there already, they're not going to get a monopoly capital. What is it going to be done to make sure, ware, le bona, that may to huraba barashay of Batoma Moligation? We are tired, ya huraba Rona, year in, year out. Reesa buying power, somebody owns KFC Moligation, and hadi le Moligationing, Ungachele, eh, we sagosantin. Rona, all we do is to pump money into those establishment. So I'm saying, maybe in this bill, talk about protection of the buying power. How are you going to protect our buying powers as Batomo Township? Thank you.
Hallel. Hallelujah. Yato le zalapo. Nyabingelela, battali, basi, Louisham, Yakariso. Namengongo, mu yomshali, ualana. Ikoni, item, engi bonile, etio na. Kungenzeka, gule, kulo mshla, vesu bo na, yegoba. Ukho na, kotoa, si bo ni gathu, goba, ose chenziso, ngendela, ini na. Nje ngama, nje. Sin espes, esenge, ama shop, angenva, basi, clinic lab. Effestop. Omkondo, ebengi banao, manpe, kalian dao. Yegoba, sibele Louisham Social Development Center. Sibele molu yetu, sina battali balana, eskabeni. Esi zakonu, kuti, gule, molu yetu. Omkondo, ami, sata banu, kuti, sina, esu, ulaganjaye. Ben omkondo, kuti, ngati household, sikipe ama hundred randi. For two, three months, siee, kuhulume nde, sfiga siti, nankwa, sasiku pet. Stolustengele, lendaw. Sakimoli yetu. Uguzegule, molu yetu. Lapas, esewenza, sina battali, sis, tenke, konala. Puti, end of the month, send a show, ugo ti, every household, ya lana, ekshaleni. Agula household, deso, lali ngajile, sina yo, injela, yeguti, sisewenza, selomshla, olape, uhulume nde, ngakon, kuti, stenge lahun. Starta, vanto, nawetu, sis ekshaleni. Basewenza, ndaweni yetu. Kunga, vela, vanto, nawatu, alis, tratene. Yon, kimsewenza, intu, sis funa yo. Esi, asdi, nguti, sis ten. Sina, esdi, ngapanchi. Kotwa, sisu, oti, sibe, gumoli yetu la. Songe, sisewenza. Stolu, kuti, na ngas, siba ne, ne, nefeli, nyama, siba ne, sifo. Sibele program, yeguti, gumoli yetu. Sitola injela, yeguti, sia, sina, sina, gungo ava. Uzatolu, uti, community yetu, isa, isa suga, ipaga ame. Sina, vinavanto, avalala, venga jile, tinasi konna, uhulume nde, konna. Siee, gelinda, ware, goba. Umuntu, waveno, wake yetu. But let's socialize. Sichanga neni, uhulume nde, asnede, stoli, ndawaliana, sewenza konna, sisumpagatwetu. Amen.
Senbona, isantala, paya, besini akogoto, ne? Okay, koluma ke, naze, le see, afterwards. Hello? Hello? Hello, ne, hello ya, sijosa kuima?
Um, Dumanaleka? Um, rete, um, mina, waram, basically, we're being...
As I mentioned, ugo ti, we sundays, sizo gus.
Okay, um, mikamala, mutse, pane. Minan, intu, uzo kuluma nga, it's basically for the youth. Because, um, nyabona, you passing out bills of which on paper, they worth it. We being sold, is intu, guti, magmelan, is implemented pants, nothing is happening, ne? Because, mina, kulmela, mina, on my side. It's probably about four years, unfuna ifandi. Niya, ya, emkali city, all the time, I'm being told, dueti, pageeta, yego. You go to NYDA and whatnot, but nothing is helping us, you understand? So, siba frustrated because you call us, pera, spumelas, spumeko, ugsomama, era, this thing. But then manka took harm, but nothing is happening on the ground, you understand? Because last year, Iran Fante, imagine, sugela, from Ekariso, Ngahiran Fante, in my office, in municipality office, it was something like this. Um, for ama business. By, nigeyunki, intu, everything was on paper, they were active for a month. Till today, nothing is happening, but truly, you understand? So, sibele ama, and we don't even believe, ugo ti, this, whatever the bill you passing out now is gonna help us. So asas, ugo ti, how best can you meet us halfway? Because, Yakariso, there's nothing productive, you understand? Akna, ama, ama social, anything, there's nothing that's happening in Yakariso. Everything is dead. Masfuni information, we don't know where to go. So maybe if you guys can meet us halfway and sibe, no mundo, oni, uzo, sngeza, ye, na la, sim hold accountable for what you guys just said now. We understand, in the future, because nyakuluma, nyahamba, then there's nobody else to hold accountable for that. So, stela, before samba la, nishye, no mundo, also, sewenza na eh, tina, as the youth. See, I'm timanda, please.
Seabongaka kulu, swela na. Eh, bo mama, stela na, ni inkulume, ne? Nikona, eh, tratene, nete, isha. Siga ma, ama poi, santa chelis, intuzi, kuluma.
Thank you. Ke tirofato maswabi. Ke lebokala bili, eh, regrelen for now. But I think as the previous speaker, I have a problem, ya huri. Every time reintroduce, we are to new laws, new act, bills and so on. The real, real problem is not the bottle, whatever, huri, keman, otsanango, botong and so on. The real problem, eh, kuri, batobaba, probera, kan, at a local level. Kiboné, ba etan, di lo, difficult for community to access everything, eh, lunguri, like propose. And I think that is my main problem. Outline this, ya huri, ko, ko, local level, what is really going to happen? Because at the end of the day, Ri Dumeela, huri, hunale, batopilo principle, my AI to any government office, batopilo principle does not exist. Why can we, you are from pillar to post? And that is not going to help us. Ki, uki len ta tefala, are, reako, social development, social development, eh, reblela, huri, eh, retro, kuri, social development eh, in terms of economics, but how, tusai, yang and so on. Is the same pillar to post, ware, rumelango yo. Make a one-stop office, mo ilonguri. We will go there and get all the information, we will be happy. The other thing, kuri, I am happy, huri, le bua, kadi bylaws. I am happy, huri, our mayor is here and our councilor, Molushama, is here. Let us come together, beat on the meetings, the community. Let us go through the bylaws, tarona, so that the bylaws, tarona, di riberekele. So far, akiboné, the bylaws documented that I read does not mean anything to me as a resident. So I think it's high time, huri, those bylaws really bakanye and di riberekele in terms of everything, not only economic. The other thing, eh, I think it's on page 11. Eh, Molly Buang, huri, eh, people should group each other together so that if, hunale, rekonohweta, proper supply chain, that is going to be another conflict, ya kiboná. Outline it properly to say, if eh company A, B, C, itlokopana. Company A, B, eh, company C, if inaleman, hyber, hye, produces, pinjitsi, sase, right? How is it, are we going to manage, huri, A le B, bassa safari because of company C? So if di lo, zo, hadio on the bill, we are going to create another conflict. So, ne kiri, look at those things. Kitlayema, foso, that, ah, that, babuwe, thank you.
Seabonga, akeko, otintegile, sna good. Okay, tis, sebo.
Eh, Tobe.
Not to you. You spoke, ne? You didn't? Well, I didn't see your hand, okay. We can talk.
Tobe. Ke volsha, kekwanee, from, I'm the CEO of the National Black Business Caucus, of the Black Business Council, ne? Leaders from government, thank you very much for this initiative. I like the bill, but there are some things I'd like to add on that I think are missing in the bill. The first one, the first one is related to non-South African owned businesses that are in townships, non-compliant with anything, but competing with businesses that are black owned in South Africa that have to comply. So we need to deal with that in the township economy. So I hope that can go into the bill, that anybody who runs a business here must comply with the laws of the country, must bank, in our banks, must pay tax like everybody else, must be registered to be in the country in the first place. And I would like to see this, um, what do they call it, this refugee visa, this asylum. It cannot qualify somebody to run a business in the country. They must go through the proper channels so they can run a business in this country. So at the NBBC, we see a lot of township businesses suffering because there's no compliance by those foreign businesses. Okay. The second point is the qualifying criteria of this fund that's going to be built. The devil is always in the detail, okay? So now, you have a fund like the 10 other funds that exist. But all of them want you to have a million renz for you to borrow money to start a business. They want you to have a real estate for you to borrow money to start a business. You go to apply at NEF, they tell you stories, you cannot comply. They don't tell you why you don't comply, you just don't comply. So we need this bill to have a qualifying criteria that does not request things that are not available in townships. It must be a bill that township people can access and the rules must not be the same as the bank because we have Absa, who's declining us, we have Netbank, who's declining us. We can't have a fund that also declines people in the township because they don't have assets, okay? So I hope that when the qualifying criteria must be looked at in this bill. The other one is the broad-based economic empowerment. In this bill, I'd like that to be touched. You cannot have one politically connected person owning 13 companies that have suddenly become BEE, but they are white monopoly capital. In this bill, I'll propose that we have anyone who's politically at the top. If they do a BE transaction, they must be limited to a number of BE transactions. They cannot own 100 companies as if they're the only black people in the country. Everybody must have a chance to participate with a white-owned company to transform it. So I hope that goes into the bill as well. And then the other one is the ward councilors. In this bill, I hope that ward councilors must be totally removed from allocating projects. Ward councilors are the problem in the townships. Because ward councilors make deals behind closed doors with white-owned companies that come into the township. We need this bill to eradicate their participation. You can set up a steering committee in the community to deal with that company. You can set up a steering committee in the community to deal with that company and choose a CLO. We don't want a councillor puppet as a CLO in projects. That is something I hope this bill can look at, because if we're really trying to fix township economy, we must change his problems, okay? And then the other one is big business coming into the township. Pick and pay comes in, Christopher, I mean, Christopher is a shop right, the CEO of Shop Right. He earns over thirty million a year, but he pays a woman who, oh, 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 ten P M, three thousand runs. We need these guys to come in and pay better, one, but the most important, I'd like to see them, if they're in the township, they must have, they must establish a community fund, a township trust, of that township where they're operating, so that that local community, Ronaldo Cola Arena, the soccer grounds, we have clinics that are dilapidated, we don't have these companies putting money into the community, they're just dragging it out and taking it somewhere else.
Yeah, mindful of the two minutes.
Okay, I'm almost done, sir. This leaves us as perpetual consumers in our own Africa, and in my Africa, we cannot allow that. They must set up a trust, where they put a percentage of their total turnover into that trust, and that trust can help the crutches, it can help the, the, the non-government organizations, it can help all kinds of people who need assistance in the township. They must contribute to the, to the townships. And then finally, um, we need financing, we need some kind of model that will finance the procurement of cleaning up the townships. We are talking about township economy, but who's gonna drive from Bryanston into a township that's filthy, literally, to come and have a coffee? If a township business is to survive, it must be able to, to invite money from outside the township. The BMBs in the township, the, the people living outside the township, people who fly in are afraid to go to the BMB in the township, it doesn't matter how beautiful that BMB is, but the environment that surrounds that BMB stops business from coming to the township. So the government, in this bill, must have somewhere where you empower those who do horticulture, to plant flowers on the side of the road. If you can do it at, um, Mall of Africa, why can't it be done in the township? We are not cows or animals that have to live in dirt. Little Naritoka, that same manicured roads, without potholes and sewage running down the road, we need this bill to enforce that municipalities must make sure that they employ teams of people in the township, not this EPWP, proper contracts for people to come and clean the streets. Thank you.
Eh, sorry, I agree, I indicated, and then I want to get also the views from this side.
What I will ask, when I start here, on a paramece, so, eh, in the middle now, so, eh, one, one. Okay, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. No one, eight, one.
Eh, thank you very much, leadership. Hey, Johnny from Merafo. The bill is great, I must say, but I see problems. Most of black people who are blacklisted, we are not going to be allowed to apply for funding. We can hardly register any company because of that. I think if this bill can include a clause whereby we can be assisted, and if you can look into this blacklisting thing, you find, eh, they are unfairly blacklisted. It is a very serious problem. Number two, I'm from mining area, there are mines that are closed. There are structures that can be used for this purpose. The mines are destroying some of this infrastructure. If the government can assist us to stop or maybe consult the local government before they can destroy any infrastructure, I think that is going to help us a lot, thank you.
Thank you, number two.
Tobey, eh, Patricia, I'm from ward sixteen, Marali. Eh, I want to respond to my brother there. Eh, I believe the legislature came to Ranfontaine on the first of March. This bill is not new to some of us. They've discussed some of the issues, so we took it upon ourselves, eh, we are going to start a committee amongst ourselves, because a lot of times people have started committee, they run away with money or they eat with their own family. So we said we are starting the committee, each and every region must have a representative. Each and every sub-region must have a representative, each and every ward. There are a lot of people who have got a business mind, but they don't know where to go. So we want to help those people. I urge each and every person in this place, that you come together as a group of business people, form a committee in your ward. We have already started in Ranfontaine, we are meeting each and every, eh, we, each and every Tuesday. So I invite you that you come at this number, that we get information, teaching about the financial, how to handle the finances and everything, how to get the funding. And it's going to be our responsibility to go to the mayor, thank you, mayor, you are here, or you are still here. Mayor, you are here, thank you very much, that we are going to come to you as a committee. We're gonna want funds and we want people who will be representing us, people who will be accountable. We don't want people, thieves, we are tired of thieves, eh, for how long people have been stealing things and they're eating alone? So we are in this, this thing together and we need your support and we need you to be united. United, we stand, divided, we fall.
Got that, eh, go on, I see the committee, eh? Tina, see, Kala, eh, November, tell him. Go on, you see, the committee, department, this is a portfolio, it's consulting, okay? Number three.
Good afternoon, everybody. Kimosidi, Mofuking, from Ranwest. Eh, I'm so worried, every time legislature, eh, it like a mochar, haruna.
We are sick and tired of eating the Jodzeli Bodile. Eh, Joko Pahore guys from province or from how they were legislature. Romelang the inspectors to Indian shops. Those people are sleeping on their flowers, are sleeping on their milli milli. And now we are busy eating dirty every day. And it's only them who are owning shops. We tried for a rebbe. I'm a businesswoman, I'm doing construction. But I'm telling you today, today. I guess so totally must have been. I guess so yet it's even in my own area. I do building, I do all those things. This is a misleading building. But I told him, because Indians, they are busy gripping everything and no one is standing up. So Joko Pahore, little man inspector, I remember that's our own name, that local alpha because but what's that choo choo ritual, let me read your body. Send their proper investigators. But they, but check the shop, the body like it only twenty-four years staying in that area. Now my area nearly ten years, I know all those shops. I did review, but it's still in the fridge. It green, it's actually green, it purple, yeah, no. So please, we are sick today because they didn't write. Secondly, eh, recopacadi open buildings in our area. Lepasflay, eh, who Lepasflay? Lepasflay. In a lady building, they're empty, everybody vandalizing. Whenever we go there and ask at least a bar if a clinic, we don't have a clinic where we stay. Harla clinic. Recopacore bar related clinic, bar go to province as if they're talking about Jesus, someone who's not on the world. They will tell you, go to province. So since we don't know who is province, help us out, the building, the bereke. One day you will find someone, Jesus is lot in the building. I don't have a problem with Jesus is lot. I don't have a problem with the church. Those people, they don't have proper document to own those buildings. Tina, we have everything, but they don't allow, they deny, they don't allow us to own those buildings. But Jesus is not is owning the whole building. But to batata moli, I don't have a problem with church. I have a problem, but what about finding buildings, they don't even have eh eh passport or eh. So the building, they belong to public works. I get it, I'm angry. Public works. China, I think the building, the bereke, who are they? The more area you know, now, I really public works. So next time, we're close to a road sixteen, it's a fire, I call the cook, they don't go to public works. If I start ready, the buildings are totally by fire, by force. Really, thank you.
Through you, Mengube.
Thank you.
Mengube through you. Eric, look, eh, sorry, sorry. I agree, we talk to the bill. Libava la talan, please try to talk to the bills, general. And the proposals debate to the bill. Because wanted this bill to work for you. I just plead with you, what are being focused to the bill? Thanks, Mengube.
Sanibonani, lokuluma yo, unobantukotongo from Swaneville. Is Swaneville, I'm yes, no, could you lookish? The place, kune komo, the very good, go, go, I'm sure, oh, lele, and yes, now, I see. Um, Nika, Zwa, Yungu Ban. Land down from October, November, December, about to an about to July. Oh, Philomas, Paul, on a clinic, you're glad now, if you can, and you lookish. Ula, she, Yonki, into fire, about to an about to fire, I'm a police, I was. I call next to me, service, if you man, I right. Could you, I could, I could feel um, to Anna, cause we get to pay you. So, I'm, but I'm, singa, Baza, I say, I, officer, I can say. Now, I'm trying to, so, Sally, and they, I could, you spend, do, Lanin.
Our youth. When the youth are there, they wear the most drugs, they use drugs, everything. I'm a farmer. I'm a farmer, or I'm a farmer, because of the drugs. I want, I, I, I say that to my mother, the whole West End, not to say that to my father. Not to say that to my father, because there are some people who benefit on this bill, the other people don't benefit. And when it comes to elections, people are starting to target the informal settlement. They don't target the place where you are. I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, can you help us today as informal settlement, we're sitting in Muhali City? Can you do something about our youth? When you're going to let us play, everyone, I don't say the black or white, everyone in South Africa is our brothers and sisters. But with drugs, can you do something for them? To get something to do. If you decide to run the country, I can offer myself to help that youth, to get something for the day. Thank you.
Sing up, sing up, huh? So, yeah, go. Number one. Two. One, two. Three. Three, four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Green there. Eight. Nine. Nine. Nine, ten, white, the cape, eleven. Number one. I greet you all in the name of Jesus Christ.
My name is, my name is Nomser Selibano from West End. I'm a farmer, a township girl. I have heard Mr. Mosha says, the fund doesn't fund farmers. But it says rural. I don't know rural and farmer is not the same thing. And then the second thing, in the bill, I want development of the township to be stated. We want universities, we want colleges, we want markets, we are farmers, where we will sell our produce in the market. You mustn't come to Joebek, everything must be done in our township, so that you must be able to assess everything, to control everything. We are sick and tired, this must be stated in the bill, that the markets, the universities, the colleges, because when our children want to educate themselves, they must go far, that's why now things are wrong with our children. So we want them next to us, everything must be developed around the townships. Thank you.
Thank you. Number two. It's a bill, it's on Bolega, Imar. It's a bill.
Hallelujah.
Ota, ota, ota. Ota.
Number one, I want to thank you so much on this bill. It's, oh, it's a bill that will give us a direction. But this thing has been happening, I don't know how many times. Good things are coming to us, but we are failing to handle them. But what I'm trying to say as a, as a community, can we please come together and work to this bill? We must not rely on to them. I think they did what they are supposed to do. So now the ball is really in our hands. We need to play it very simple and very carefully. Because we need to approach this thing differently. We've been doing it for past years, these things have been happening for past years. Now it is time that we come together and do it differently and appreciate what they are doing. You know, and, 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 and what they are doing, they are doing their job, it's their salary, what they are doing. But what about us? Especially us on the ground. There are serious things, when you talk of this bill, it's, it's, it's taking care of us on the ground. Can we all on the ground stand up, really stand up? When I say stand up, not only pointing fingers at each other, but can you, because if you point a finger to that person, the three is pointing at you. Can we please just come up together? And some of us, it's not the first time coming, coming across this. So we agreed that for us to answer whatever question that we have, all the inputs, we must not just send inputs individually, because what is killing us here in West End, we do things individually. If you can all kill this spirit individually, can we please work as a team? Can we please do things together? Because if we are together, we will be able to see the goodness of this. The goodness of this is here, and we have to unpack whatever is in here, work on it. And, and, and when we submit these, these inputs, they must be so much constructive in such a way that we have to be conducted as West End. And when we are conducted as West End, we will be able to sit down again as community and go through it and say, this was not answered. This was not, this was answered, together, together, let West End come together. Even, even when you talk of a land, a land is a problem, it's true. But if you only go to municipality alone and say, I have a problem of a land, they will never hear you. But if you come together and say, we want a land, together as a, a community, as a team. We've been struggling like this because this is the spirit of individualism. That is why we are struggling, and our kids, I'm telling you, will blame us tomorrow. Please, can we approach this thing seriously? We have, we have, we have a committee, in this committee, you have to bring more people in this committee. And, 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 when you go back home, please, go back, go through this document. And whatever submits, whatever you think it means to be attended to, write it down, submit. We will give you a number where you submit, and that number will help, they go down, they go through that, and they submit it as West End. Not as individual, but as West End, we submit. I, I thank you.
Hallelujah, Jesus. Kala ba kala chelete. Kala ba kala chelete, le fati le asukpeka. Kala ba kala chelete. Dilo toto tle hori disinyeha kala ba kala chelete. Kana kwa ngwe re tla ribui le ntsulele reng, muso wama buru una ulipeteere. Liburu ne liti hori, ya ikan mara staki broot obitaful obso. Maru roona ranso, na staki broot arna kanale neiba yarona, hori, otuana ta abe, staki broot obitaful. Yanu, ntwe elenteng, ketla ebaya yana, butata boki lenka bolemoha. Hotsoaka president wa pele ata, akina mo wa South Africa. Ke mo hui lenka singa hadin tota, din tota. Kusimulutu kusinyeha hilete mfe lafo. Kana ntwea pele, kia haku sa tlela hona lili inspector in South Africa. Hori, kusaba lili inspector din tota ngata, guru hui kez editri. Kiri ofisi hui kez editri, ke mo distra te hui kez editri. And ntwenaya hola, it's a lapel, and the more it's a lapel, is the more ebula ya se chaba. And se chaba seseswank, kete generation etanga momo ra. Nakineke re katsayo loyaka, kia kupaha hori ntwe twanale euritoko meli. Kia uta hori hati, retuana ta kuri ribui ka eng, maru dilo tse diwa hara sabui ka zone, hutlo singeaha, anda sente kusinyeha hile. Honano nyana, right, kutluila hubeua kata bayari drugs, kutluila hubeua kata bayar landi. Dilo tse nakaufela, kene didi te, didi te, kesa betaka ba nabadi drugs, keta kila kome Rafaun Carltonville. Kesa betaka ba nabadi drugs by the end of this month. Mutimo onrometi kata maya, onrometi koli popo, akifika kote kia kutiswa ba nabadi drugs. Ande banabana kaufela, kiba nabaili onhori, kiba nabare, haba pele bupele buven sente. Nebato paha misa economy. Yanu, economy ha sali wile kata dilele, intse hatelwa leka jeku. Maru di business idia bulwa, koe sa kala dilo tse di ngata, banaka monteka mona ba safari. Ntwe elenteng, for an example, kene kibuli agriculture, ntwenya project ya agriculture. I was the first lady to take agriculture in Merafu. Kana kwea, the first president a, afana kama fazi. Right. Seselenteng, it's a ranso, ha outwa hori, more projecting refuse three million. Yaba ranso ufi lahun kika out, kamo pro, kamo projecti. Kala ba kala hori, outwa hubeua ka chelete. Ande na haneki bulak projecti, ne kibula kala ba kala hori, kiba toto sa community. And so hakaka kona until today, kema tili di Casey kamifuta fut, the officer kamifuta fut, kusinyewa chelete. And so, sabo fele kia haki bolela, kiri department of agriculture hori, Casey akatana tiyo ko president. Kana koe, hatuana ta hori kisi yo ko presidente, kisa ri taba kaufela kote, kia ha presidento tana tin kisa ri taba koe ne, kia halo hori, okikiwa out of the parliament. Kishola tebaro kibuwa kama. And so, ntote di ngata ba tomba mutim, chelete eho, ande kisiya in that project, ande say ele five hundred and, five hundred and sixty million. Hakiti chelete eho kaufa, kaufela yone, hotsoaka three million ya pele, ekeni more projecti hori, chelete eho inaya fella kay, Casey inaya fella momoye. Ande, haba buwa, kene kima kala, presidento jile chelete, presidento uti te chelete. Mare e le chelete senten di jiwa, before presidenta ona ataba temos tulo, ah hubeu nekse hotose. But ona keneke reng, are lukisi, community, ha ibelo na lulu kisan di tab, because hale salu kisi lo na community. Ah, ah hunan tewe lo, ande din tade ba tu lukisi wa kantwa, are ben kafuleka din tota di etan, din tota na dia singe, disinyeha lo hufeita. And so, akina re ben kafuleka diu ete sa halan. Please, honano nyana, kisokola hukreya elendi, taata, kahi kapakai. Kala ba kala hori, landi kia ikaoka, haki ibatele na, kiba tana ba nabadi drugs. Banabana, kiba nabaili onhori, banale potential, e mu dimu moboni. Baba ngwe, banala school, baba to tusiwa ka school, mutimo hui ta armon, hati saban, are banaba, otuana ta oba febe. Banaba, oba bolele di kolo.
In closing.
Okay, oba bolele di kolo ta di skills, banabana ba kuper, baraha babati, hori bayo korhi hep, babuwe, baye, babuwe, ande kintwe sa halan. Because ah hunan tewe ba etan, landi ha yu mori kabireke landi. Thank you, kialibo. Thank you very much. Number five. Me?
Sanbonani kama la mina ngu tingani, o governmenti uagamtechu. Tingani, governmenti uagamtechu, kama la blislungu, leolo velu ngua kala mina, ne kama la katingani la nsekti zaga ti sem, alisaskati. Sanbonani, hulumini wa se province.
Elagopi, uvela gopi?
Givela, eh, Rand West, eh, Rand West, ingivela e woti, ne ba ibiza ba ti, e wotri, which is ingingapansi, komnunza na ufandondor, ufandondor, ge na ge wet Democratic Alliance. Ngawa zlo go wehuti angzanga ngipolutiki, senge zenzingu gwo ni lempa lati. Eh, provincial, eh, provincial center, paramente ya se province, o ba ipin kama nguti paramente len. Ya kia figa yutu komstresi, ya tembi sa i paramente ya se province. Koto sesekona ne zinyezinto, namanja ez ngarenziu, yebo ngiazu kutaksu kulu kulu, ange ngarenze zonke zinto ngisakati sisooto. Eh, hulumini, ito vshunga kulu, things that make me to be hurt every day, intwen ngenza wuti ngbevshunga kulu every day. Is that when I meet the people, bani ngakulu, people who are hungry, people who are what? Kuno kfiga ngundo nyama, wutu konje ngisbozo, nga sesen ngabozo, sesu tulemta bevo ma, eh, eti ne singiye gile, ngipumi le gulezo zinto lezo, genka yoku ti ngambengza ma impilo engono. Norma ingazange itola kale ngali onte la, efuna kale ngakon. Koto abantu ngenzela, insala, esasela ngakon, ngize ngisbozo kutu hulumini, uba no ngakela atu hulumini. Kula bantu la ba ba bulalayo, la bantu abantu ngula yo chele, la bantu abantu chele, la bantu ababosiwe. Ngoba bo na balala beltiri, futna sexin ba netiye, eh, breakfast, eh, mini ba neti.
But me, I was going very in eastern Cape, I was going very where, where. And when I come there, I'm, I, I don't even know those bylaws, bylaws. So the issue of bylaws also, the municipalities, when they do this bylaws, they must invite us, we must be part of it. Because they are not in the industry.
As you close, you be allowed also to write and submit.
All right, no, let me, let me just close.
Sure.
Eh, we were told already, there are, there's a lot of money that's been borrowed for, 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 for COVID-19, from other lands. But no one, even the president, no one has said during the period of COVID-19, no one must pay for a grave. They've never said that. And these graves are expensive. We've buried more than three people in one family, in one house, paying that, that money, and we've borrowed money ya COVID. And this, these deaths, they are caused by that COVID. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let me first begin to greet, eh, the community at large and our leadership from the provincial, eh, state of leadership. Eh, my illusions are very clear and simple. When a, a bill is being promulgated from the government gazette, community members should be engaged with so that the, the bill could also include the needs of the community. So today we are having a problem where the community diverges from the bill, from the presented bill, simply because of, it doesn't include all the hardships that we come across as the community. Eh, another thing is that, eh, we as the youth, eh, we are being sidelined, eh, on a whole lot of things, especially the, the, the blacks, the black majority in the township. The, the Khautem province, eh, has a high number of crime, eh, in comparison to the other provinces in the country. The Khautem province again, has the high number of available drugs that exist in our streets, day in, day out. But the presented bill doesn't include one of those in the bill. Are we only trying to grow the townships financially, not mentally? It's like giving a person who is not, eh, money, money learned, giving him money and expecting him to use it, eh, to the best interest of it. So I was saying, let us first equip our people in Khautem, the vast majority of people in the township. Let us first equip them mentally, physically, let us equip them with, eh, with skills. Because of now we're gonna be told, eh, when we talk of S O, S M M Es, we're gonna be told that, eh, 10 million was, eh, was, eh, granted to, 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 to cater for the S M M Es, let's say in the West End. But when you actually sit down and do your, 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 your research, you will find that the stipulated number is not exactly the way it is in the actual world, it is only like that in blueprint. So the legislature, the Khautem legislature must ensure transparency to the people. And ensure, hori, they stand to their promises, because of this brings division and this sells our world. You come here, you give us certain promises, and then you don't actually live up to them. We will rebel against you, and when we rebel against you, you are one of us, what does that do to power? It shifts it to the opposition drastically so, and that further kills us. And then, eh, to, 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 to our mayor, I was saying, we as the youth, we as the bonfries, it is probably the first time we have a white mayor. So, eh, since the ball is in your court, we, we, we hope that our grievances will be met. We hope that our needs will be met. We hope that youth emancipation in Muhali City will suffice. And then to, to, to my fellow people, to my fellow American, Africans.
As you close, aban bakala bayapuma, as you close.
In my conclusion, in my conclusion as I close, let us seek information. Let us not do things with emotional, with emotions, because emotions never yield any good result. Let's seek information and let us unite, because every time when there is a problem, eh, make a room for me to come and complain and accompany me to the mayor's office, accompany me to the relevant directorates, so that our mission and mandates could be met. Thank you.
Thank you. Each one teach one.
Good afternoon, everybody. Kialidume, this a gamo hawa muti ma men. Eh, I just want to be short. Eh, I'm happy for the bill of today. Eh, but it's, it's similar like all the bills from our democracy, when I think. Eh, a different thing from my mind is, eh, how, how I'm going to apologize if I'm talking something wrong. Because now, eh, I'm over, overheated, eh, anger. It makes me uncontrollable, uncontrollable, control, control, yes, yes, yes. You know, you know, when you are talking and shaky, it means sense, because you talk deep from your heart. Eh, but hold on, a problem is, eh, I'm one of the, the tryer, and tryer, and tryer. But I end up, eh, eh, give up and stand up again. Because when somebody come try to change, I, 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 I help him to, 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 to go further. So, eh, the bill is good, as I said, eh, it had everything I want. Eh, the problem is, eh, the transaction of money, eh, to, to make a bill to be impractical. You know, you know, butata gi, butata hori, I can't understand hori, government, eh, money idula intse jiwa. Eh, why government don't try to, eh, eh, exchange how to pay, eh, eh, transaction of money? Those people, they must just work with paperworks, not receiving any cash. Eh, my minister, Minister of Finance, kena mutona na le right, kuya ganna, yahudi ya di transaction, that each and everything in government. So we can stop talking or mango ja chele, de mango ja chele. Because we'll report by feeling our know, a proof is from you, Minister. So now money come from Minister to, to another step, eh, another step, another step, another step. Eh, is 100,000, when it go to the, another step is 80,000, then it's go down, 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 till it be, it, it, it get to us, when it's 10,000.
Sabo, sabo, akul. Eh, we're asking for patience, Sesi Akreta.
Eh, dumela mbahul. Eh, wechi hukeana mon meeting oya na, that is why I'm frustrated, ando wana kake na mon meeting, ebo sa biti muti, iba ya. Eh, li tu te program direct, kali o, mutimu wa li o, tomba mutimu, that is why I'm here. Rkeni fa kana rapela, bill, bill. So amoyo ne di den, so nakali bitso kena vosin lovu, ketsuaki le koma kalisbe ka ote diwa. Eh, kodi rurali. Nakilwa na kodi rurali, keta leso kodi rurali, kiri kolona, nan tue I'm perige li kodi rurali. So I'm not going to agree with anything, gaso se sefas, because I'm perige li kodi rurali. Eh, why kiri halo is because of, na kodi rurali. Now we've got land, mayor, we come into him, you need to give us that land, you know which one I'm talking about, ager? You know, you don't know, one of them is Kamela State. Eh, we come in there, we're sitting with a youth at Mahalisbe, they don't work, but we've got something like 450 hectares that we can use. Hori plantet, o ne di spinis, keta wa wangazo, no hori kaso kono di eta, roona we can. The only thing, we don't have land to do, eh, the spinach, le masi, le achele, releba nabako Mahalis. And then the other thing is that, Ronar libatu ako Mahalis, nerikopa, koba tumba kurral development, programe moka hiso hona nu. Most of the people, bako Mahalis, batuera in rural, bakodi rurali, they don't know anything about this. Why don't you make this session, kodi rurali? Alisoka la tako eni rural, bile kia vi tuki za maya. Mare, kange lena kanadi rural, et alka anything. Li naha na fele katsela engwe, akiba tubuaka unaka refuku, today, hunaneli ti ndi rural. Honano, renalili cooperative, itenga ta from the women, kuya kodi youthi, bonta, te hunadi men's forum, kodi, kodi, kodi rurali. By long hori, they need hori, in kewe ba ta ba to paka kantwe, that is why kiri Ronar acknowledge, because of, roona kodi rurali. Renenge erika tusa bili, imare kasi honi today, because I weaka anything ya rurali, just the name, ager? So na ne likopa hori, reconsidering as rural people, because, ornar ba tu ipereka, kiba tu ipona kira kisa eh, mostrati. Kisa ilue rekako uluet. Nakita ki planta, ki riki sa kima motile, mato baba ere, bayereke, kete chele. How to see, because of. So reconsidering as rural people. Only few that they came, Katix. We need this thing. So this session needs to come. So make sure. Because I cannot. I'm proud. My own income. And I've got land. That land to assist him again, for use that land. We've got lot of plots. We don't know who's owning those plots. Again, they stays only foreigners, but to give out thing. These foreigners, they took everything from us. In the rurals, they own properties, they own land. We don't know. And. Before later. You understand? And of which. I cannot agree.
Thank you. And Maskeetala, she's announced. A deadline, say revised deadline of submission. So when you go back, as you are saying, we need to come to the rural that might be looked into, so that you give us recommendations in terms of how to include them, how to include yourselves in the bill. Thank you.
Page seventeen, development of infrastructure, industrial and commercial estates, and letting of buildings of premises. We've got a swimming pool here, number one. It hasn't been in use for a very long time. Even if it's in use, the kids are not safe. How about this swimming pool is made to be a place where schools can come and teach the kids how to swim here, utilize it somehow. That's number one. Number two. I've been living here for over 30 years. I've never seen. It's always been like that, it dilapidates every single year. How about we open something? Number three. Chamdo, it's private-owned companies. Because number one, it's too expensive. I went there with my brother last week already to ask how much is the rent here? Prices ranging from 6,000 to 18,000. How are we going to afford that when we want to start a business? It's not possible. The other place is training center. Training center, it's been rented out to foreigners. It's not being used to train the youth of Khahiso or the West End, let me say, because it's as a whole. Why isn't it being utilized for such things? There's so many buildings, but I'm going to concentrate on those ones. Thank you.
Thank you. The back there. Those two only.
I'm going to. Kalibito, Benjamin. Get more what sixteen, soliciting formal settlement. And now I'm going to. I get support. Because of. Information settlements. Including. Business development. Always had a considerate when coming to the benefits of government or help from the government. And when our youth banalili business plans, because of how fit a government. Or any other informal settlement, then they reject your proposal. Chapter three. Chapter three. But these small businesses. Register, buy a little license. Today, it's present. And one other thing. Point number, chapter number five. It's small businesses. So a problem. You people from the government, you are always coming to us, promising us good things, but you fail to fulfill your promises to your communities. Chapter three. But the problem, okay. Give a license. You're registered. Okay. Business. Obviously, if I register with SARS, it's South African. Because of. It's low, hire some few people from our community. To reduce rate of unemployment. To maintain a standard of health, I always maintain a standard of health, it's South Africans. This people, foreign illegals. Business. They affect the health, they affect the economy. Someone again from foreign countries. But we want to. But we want to. They're killing our businesses. Since they came here, South Africa, they protected our locations, they occupied all the businesses. They're making things difficult for us as South African business owners. And these people are very strategic, because of. How about I give this shop, I'm a South African. What I'm next door. Well, I'm next door, owner I'm next door. For I'm here, he said. What I'm next door, happy. Well, owner I'm next door, for him, he said. Who will have two tax shops? Then they are killing my business. Then the intention is, the intention, these people, is to come here and kill all South African businesses. But government are not saying nothing about this illegal foreigners. So. There are more than 10 tax shops. Pakistan. So. Inspector from the government. All those tax shops. Disaster, expired stock. But you government. But the South Africans. So we are killing us slowly. And this thing. People are underground. Because of. Businesses are the effect. So. And our counselors, our counselors are busy selling to these people. As I'm speaking now. But the South Africans. No. My owner. I'm busy. Please.
Thank you very much. The last one.
From what ten. Somebody. The richest. In Mokhali City. Yes, it's the richest, but other, Mr. Mayor, this one is also attended to you. I think we must make some research in this factories in Chamdo. Maybe there are some, those that are ghost factories. And the other thing I wanted to dwell on it is Chamdo Training Center, where we can, the youth or the early child development can be made, because we knew as we grew up, that Chamdo was a government building, all of it. They used to train people for three weeks, other six weeks for different skills. For security reasons, they used to train there in Chamdo. So we don't know what's happening with the Chamdo. The other thing is Chamdo Abatto. It used to be this abatto. It used to be an abatto for the government. It relocated to city deep. Everything is city deep in Jogwek, and which is not correct for the resident of Mokhali or the West End. The other thing, it must make, that the other people was talking about, the other speaker was complaining about agriculture. I think in this bill, they must also include agriculture, agriculture processing, because there in Mahalise Airport, those areas that maybe one speaker take it as if it is a rural area. But agriculture is a very important aspect of food staff. It can be. So in this bill, I was appealing that, in this bill, also they can include agriculture, agricultural processing. Yes, we know pylors are there. Pilots need everybody. Pilots must be, need everybody, they must participate. All of us must participate in the pylors, not saying, like in, the other speaker was complaining about in Lepasflay. Was complaining about Lepasflay, maybe even Krugazdop. It is like Lagos now, there's no law. It's like Lagos, anybody can make a fire in the vicinity of C B D. How can we attract investors? We can attract investors. So in terms of employment, let us train our own youth. There is Chamdo. Let us look for another space somewhere so that they can be trained also for agriculture. Agriculture is a profession. So other people, when they see you, as if you are wearing boots or you are dirty, it's not a profession. We can be, all of us will be teachers, lawyers, and what. I think I will pause from there, but I'm appealing to this bill.
Sabong, racool.
Sanbanan dumela. Livizo kishima. Everybody. Mr. Moringa is the product. As well. And then on the bill, this supporter almost. Telling more billing, to be honest. And I'm having a very serious concern about young people. Young people, I'm passionate about youth, because like now, President Avulaelamaalova. Young people, you are on your own. It was the only missing thing in the statement. It was the only missing thing, young people. And it's reality. Young people, please stand up on your feet. It's your life, I will play the government. Please, it's just ways of motivation. You're not living for the government, but some of us, we can help you, because currently. Honali Training is facilitated by a certain company. They need young people from 18 to 28. The value of the training, the value, if you had to pay, was 42,000, if you had to pay, but it is free of charge. That's where partnerships comes in. Because I might be irrelevant, you'll pardon me, the panel, you'll forgive me, but you must make use of these platforms to empower young people at the same time. So I'm just pleading for young people, if there are young people who are organized, those people are willing to come and offer those trainings, because it can be once a week, only four hours a week. Four hours a week, you empower yourself on entrepreneurship. Because currently, entrepreneurship is the only thing, is the only way to go. There's no need to beat about the bush. Because most of young people, basically certificates about HR, finance, who's gonna hire you? And when? The only best solution is to start your own business. We are willing to help, we are available. I'm not staying here, if you have leaders. I'm encouraging young people to mobilize themselves and approach the leaders as a unit. But organize it, by unemployed youth. They mobilize themselves, and when you go to the legislature, you speak with one voice, and that's when they will listen to you. And on the part of the bill, leaders, a whole lot of things in our government, in paper, perfect. In paper. But when it comes to implementation, monitoring, and evaluation, that is another thing. So I so wish, if we can improve on that and monitoring, because. I can go to the office tomorrow. The treatment I'm gonna get is like in the first place, the treatment I'll be getting. It's not cool. So if we can only improve on monitoring and evaluation, a lot of things can go right, because I was watching the other video last, about China. China has eradicated poverty for 700 million people in 20 years.